October 28, 2020. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Kathy, if you could lead us in the pledge and roll call?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Councilmember Connie.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Present. All right. Please take notice due to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Orders N2520, which suspend certain requirements of the Brown Act and the order of the health officer of the county of Mendocino, shelter in place. To minimize the spread of COVID-19, the city council members will be participating by teleconference or videoconference in the regular meeting of October 28, 2020. All right. We are now to item two, public communication. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per question, so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. Expedite matters and avoid repetition whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council. On the same subject matter, the mayor may request that his spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters within, under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action shall be taken as it is not agendized. Do I have anybody from the public that would like to speak? Going, going. Okay. Bring it back to us. Public matters, there aren't any. I don't see we have any enactment of ordinances under force, so we are now up to the consent calendar. We have council minutes for July 21st special meeting, budget workshop, the October 14th, 2020 special meeting, and the October 21st, 2020 special meeting. Do I have any questions, or do I have a motion on those?
Hello? This is Larry, and I would like to propose the agenda.
Would like to what?
I would, I would like to approve the agenda.
Oh, approve the consent. Okay. I guess I recognize Madge as the second then?
Yep. Yes.
All right. Any further discussion or any public comment? All right. All those in favor? All right. All right.
I think we have to do roll calls.
Well, yeah, you're right, because we're on COVID, so. Go ahead, Kathy.
Councilmember, excuse me, councilmember Connie.
Hi.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes. All right. Item six, information matters. Building inspection activity reports, and those can be found for the public for August and September in our packet. And now we are on item seven, commissions, agencies, and authorities. The Willett City Council meets concurrently as the City of Willett's Planning Commission and City of Willett's Assistant Agency. And I see we have no business, so we are now up to item eight, city manager reports and recommendations.
Good morning, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have before you in contract the interim police chief, proposed interim police chief, Fabian Lizaraga. Mr. Lizaraga has 42 years of law enforcement experience and was the city chief of police for five years in Fort Bragg. He only recently retired. He is willing to come on board and be our interim police chief until the new city manager can conduct your recruitment. The proposed compensation is equal to the current compensation in our salary schedule with a $1,700 either tax stipend or us paying for his lodging while he is here, which is typical for an intro. I did have one change to the report. Because of the recent PSPS, our background investigator was out without power for three days, and so he is behind on the background. And so I do need to change this resolution to make it contingent upon him passing a background check. And he will not start until a preliminary background check has been completed, and then he'll be in the administrative capacity until a full background that allows him to be a sworn officer of the post is completed. And that change we can make to the resolution. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Rodriguez, questions? Madge, you look like you have a question.
Suprema, did you want to say something first?
No, I was just going to say, no questions.
I was just going to ask if he is on this call, it'd be nice to just hear a few words. Go ahead.
I don't think he is. I'm sorry. He was not able to attend this meeting, but he certainly knows that he's going to be in other meetings. He's going to be living here. His family actually lives in Southern California, and he's going to be going down one weekend a month to see his family, but he is going to be living here in Willett's for the entire time. He's here. Okay. Thank you.
Karen, do you have any questions? Larry, do you have any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
All right. One thing I want to say, as I worked with him when I was chief, he was the chief over in Fort Bragg, and a very professional individual and very knowledgeable. It was a pleasure to work with him when I was still a chief, and so that brings a lot of experience to the team. At this point...
Thank you. I also neglected to say that when he came over to meet with us, I did bring him over to meet all the police officers and dispatchers, and he was able to witness a shift change and ask lots of questions. And I was really impressed with how well he got along with everybody and the good questions he asked. He seemed to fit right in, so it was nice.
All right. Do I have...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Motion by Suprema, do I have a second? It looks like Madge is raising her hand.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any questions from the public? All right. Kathy, if you could do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Connie.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes. Right. Yes, at this point, we are on item D. Any verbal reports? Stephanie?
Yes, I did want to talk a little bit about COVID. We had the, I think we were all surprised by being accepted into the red tier yesterday. We were overjoyed. I think we were all surprised because given the constraints that we were under, nobody sort of expected that, so it came as a very happy and pleasant surprise. So we have put things up on our websites and on our Facebook page and on the doors of City Hall, and I see that there are businesses already starting to open up a little bit more, because it does allow other businesses to start to open up and have indoor dining and even gyms to some extent, which is wonderful. And the movie theater, it could actually open as well, so we hope that that happens too. We, you know, the city managers and the county health official and the assistant director of public health, we meet every Wednesday to talk about COVID and about what's going on and what we can and can't do. And I know that there's been a lot of questions about playgrounds, and this is, and I've gotten them too, and it's difficult. And I want to do, the health officer has talked to us a lot about this, and, you know, Sage San Jacobo from the city of Ukiah is really taking, trying to take the lead on doing some research throughout the state on what other cities are doing to make playground equipment safe. Right now, the county health order does not have playground equipment open, and we are respecting, of course, the county health order. Some of the issues I think people don't realize are that the state requirements are quite stringent, and if you're going to open them, to open them safely, there are a number of requirements, and the county health official has stated that unless we can do it safely, he does not feel comfortable that we should do it. However, we're really looking at ways we can and what we can do to make this as safe as possible. You know, some of the things you wouldn't even think of are, well, we just wipe down everything with disinfectant when people use it, but actually, the CDC guidelines say that disinfectant isn't what is required on playground equipment. They want it washed, not disinfected. And washing is something that, it's sort of, we're trying to get our heads around that, because they clearly want a rigorous washing at least once a day, and then if you're washing it, well, they don't, soap is counter indicated for playground equipment because it's slippery, and it's therefore dangerous. And so then you're looking at other sorts of substances that can be used, and, you know, they're looking into that. I mean, there's something called Terminator, and that's being used, but we don't even know, you know, we don't know what the history of that is, and is that safe? And it sounds a little ominous. So I know since, since the city manager of Ukiah actually has a rec department, they're actually looking at what other jurisdictions are doing and what kind of materials are being used, but no one is feeling very comfortable right now with the CDC guidelines, and I apologize for that. We just do want to remain safe, as the county health officials have, you know, they're, and the history around the state, it really runs the gamut between people just putting up signs and sort of entering your own risk, to people actually monitoring the playgrounds. And they're, and Ukiah is actually doing a survey to see what people are doing, so we can come up with a reasonable model in our county that will be safe for us. And so I'm following the county health official on that one, and hopefully we can get those open soon in some capacity, but right now it is still closed for county health order.
Stephanie, has REMEF weighed in at all yet on this?
I did call REMEF because, and explained to REMEF, and their position is, if the county health official does not feel it's safe, if they do not feel it's safe, then we shouldn't open it. And they're just like, look, if you can't keep it safe, you can ensure it's safe, then REMEF is not comfortable about it being opened.
For the members of the public, that's our insurance. Any questions? Do you have anything else, Stephanie?
No. Other than, you know, I'm just following the county health order, all the cities are, we're sort of walking in lockstep on this, and of course, if council wants to do something different, they of course can, but for now, that's, we are all sort of meeting regularly with the health officer, trying to use best practices.
I see that council members have a question on this. Suprema, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I understand where city managers coming from, and that, but I do believe that each city has some, has an opportunity to give feedback to the county on how we feel we can handle it in our community. And I've looked at, and I've talked to quite a few people about the California Department of Public Health and looking at their website and trying to understand specifically what they want. So like, for example, you were talking about the chemicals that you use. I don't see that anywhere on here as a requirement, so I'm not sure whether that's additional information and discussion, or if that's something in print that you're given that the public can't see on the website, because I can't find, I can't find that. I see requirement, and then I see recommendations, and what I'm looking at is CDPH.California.gov, and then I went specifically to playgrounds, and I'm looking at a public health notice from September 28, 2020. Should I be looking somewhere else, Stephanie?
We are looking at the CDC guidelines that do have the recommendation, that talk about keeping things safe. It talks about, and I don't have it brought up right now, so I can't cite it for you, but it does talk about washing rather than disinfecting. And then if you do further research, it talks about what washing is, because some of these are sort of broad brush, so it requires some research. It talks about half hour limits for people to be there. It talks about social distancing, enforcing social distancing. It talks about putting capacity requirements on every apparatus, and that if that's what you're looking at, that's what we've been looking at, and that is from the CDC, and that's what all the agencies have been reviewing as their sort of guideposts for safety.
I'm looking at, I'm not looking at the CDC. I was looking at the California Department of Public Health, and they do have all the things that you mentioned, except for the part about the chemicals, they don't cover, there's nothing on their website that's about that.
It doesn't cover chemicals, it says, but it says washing, and so when you research washing, that could be power washing, we assume, however, power washing all the equipment every day, we're actually, we are in a drought here. There's that, and I, again, we have, nobody feels that that's a good way to go about it in a drought here. And so we're talking about scrubbing with soap and water, but then soap, you're not supposed to use soap, because park operators know that you're not supposed to use soap on apparatus, because it's slippery and people could fall. So it's a matter of finding out, hey, what chemicals can we use? And so it is sort of up to us to do that. But that's a question.
Because the public health doesn't state that the playground equipment must be washed daily, but there's a recommendation that increase cleaning of frequently touched services daily as practical. But it's a recommendation that, that increase cleaning frequently, and I'm just wondering if this council has the ability to reach out to the county and, you know, hey, we really want our parks open, there are taxpayer benefit, and we, what specifically do we need? Because it feels, not saying that it is, but it feels as if the county has decided to have tighter regulation in regards to playgrounds than the state has said necessary. And so I'm just trying to, trying to differentiate between what the state requirement is and what the county's requirement is, and then our role as city of being able to influence what we think is best for the citizens of our local community. And I just want to throw out a little comparison that I often hear and think about, and I know that kids don't have a voice, they don't attend these meetings, they're not, they don't have anybody specifically to advocate for them, but I want you to think about it from this perspective. If you go to the gas station, do you ever see any hand washing stations? I don't. You go there, you touch the pump, everybody touches the pump, but there's never been any issuance from the state, from local government, that says that you must wash your hands, or that the operators at the gas station has to wash those pump handles regularly. I'm just, you know, I, I want to keep my community safe, but I also very much need some logic behind restrictions, and I'm struggling with the logic behind this one, and wondering why the state said, yes, you can open playgrounds, and there's this whole big study on the impact that the kids are having in terms to obesity and mental health, and that's why, you know, and here we are still in a small community where we have three active COVID cases, for example, and our playgrounds are close to a large community, to the community that we have. Those are my thoughts.
Jerry? Jerry?
Jerry, you're listening.
Larry, I've got Greta ahead of you. Hold on one sec.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I just wanted to say that I have heard from multiple residents who are very concerned about the inability to use the play structures. They understand the distinction that the parks are open, but the playground equipment is not. Stephanie and I have had multiple emails about this, and I understand the perspective of the city managers and the concerns of the public health officer, but I do agree with Suprema that there are some confusions. The CDPH website does, does say on multiple occasions, these things are necessary as practicable. And to me, that puts a real question, as it has for many members of the public, does that mean it has to be done, or does that mean it only has to be done in the cities that have the resources to do so? And clearly, our community, A, doesn't have the resources to meet all of these guidelines, but B, may also not need to meet all of these guidelines, because we are, you know, fewer in population, fewer in case rates, all of those things. And so I think that that, that fact really creates a lot of confusion in the minds of the public and frustration, because they feel like the rules are a little bit arbitrary. And so it's, it's not any attack on city management or lack of appreciation for the difficulties being faced, but there is a high level of frustration in the community not being able to use the playground equipment. And as the people's representatives, I think that we do feel that pressure to sort of rattle the cages and say, why is this, when we have, you know, so many families out there who really are suffering and need an outlet and need a place for kids to play that isn't just, you know, grass or pavement or bark chips. They want something to climb on, and, and they have it right there, and it's out of reach. And so we're just looking for options, we're looking for a way to be able to explain it to people that will help minimize the frustration and recognize the city's liability. So we understand it's a tricky situation. We wouldn't be doing our jobs if we weren't saying, please, please, how can we figure this out? That's my spiel.
Larry, go ahead.
I, the thing that has been brought up to me, and I have observed it, is that the kids, the young people that use the skateboard park, evidently it's legal to use the skateboard park, and I see, you know, 15 or 20 people skating and maybe five or six people standing close together without masks and are skating periodically. I mean, I don't stop and observe them for an hour if this is just kind of a slow pass by, but I've done it for the last four or five days, and it's pretty much the same thing. And I wonder why that they are able to do it when the young kids that can't use the city parks, can't use the city parks thing, and, but just down the street, it's okay to do...
Stephanie, is it because one is high protection, one isn't?
Yes. They open skate parks, that was one of the first things that was open, because theoretically, when you're in a skate park, you don't really touch anything, you just skate around, and it's supposedly easier to stay away from each other, but play structures are necessarily things that you touch, and little kids have their hands on it, and then another kid has their hand on it. So that was sort of the last thing that they had closed, was the play structures. Certainly, I believe that city councils, if wants to reach out to the county, they absolutely should, and talk about their frustrations or ways to move forward. You know, the health officer talks to us about what we are able to do, and we tell them what our, what our resources are, and so we sort of talk about that. But we absolutely understand the frustration, and if the, you know, if the direction is, hey, let's talk to the health officer about throwing it open and just putting up some signs, you know, we could do that. That is absolutely something we can do. Would he feel it's safe? I don't know. That's up to him, because clearly we can't do what is required, but that is, that is your prerogative, and you can do that. The signage is something we can work on, and, I forgot what I was going to say, I'm sorry. But yeah, no, absolutely. I think that is, if you want to go to the county and say, hey, throw them open. And I think the confusion about the, what I remember as being saying, the confusion regarding the, when the state opens things up, the counties and cities are always free to be more restrictive, and that is actually part of the state order. The state order sort of gives, okay, this is permitted, but if you can't go by these guidelines, or if you think that it's unsafe, they give counties and cities the power to hold back. And so that's what that county administrate, the county health official is looking to the cities and seeing what our resources are. And that's, that's the process that they have been going through in this whole COVID process. But certainly, if you watch reports of county health officer, I think that that's absolutely appropriate for council to do.
Suprema, then Greta. Suprema, did you want it? Get your hand up. Muted.
Thank you. I'm asking that this council give direction to the city to act on our behalf, to advocate for this. I understand that, that the county has the right traditional restrictions, but we know that with the rodeo and other things, the city acted to try and help preserve other things that were valued in the community that were restricted, and we reached out and we were able to come up with a modified plan. I feel like our kids can't come to these meetings and they can't speak. We've got to speak for them, and this is something that I believe is important, and I hope that the rest of the council will, willing, will come out and state that we would like to see collectively as a group support for some kind of a modified amendment to the, to the county ordinance that is closer aligned with the state, so that we can make this happen.
I just wanted to say that the public health officer has been on the Thursday morning calls that I attend, and this, this has been high in the discussion for the last few weeks, and so he's definitely hearing it. I also wanted to say that, that last, last week's meeting, I suggested that my business brain kicked in, and one of the things that I thought about was, we need to change the conversation. Instead of telling people what they can't do, which is use the playground equipment, we need to start giving them options of what they can do, what is available right now. And there are lots of things that, that people can do outdoors with children to help burn off that steam that don't include the playground equipment. And if we did a better job of marketing that, what those options are, it could take the sting out a little bit of not being able to use the playgrounds. Ultimately, I want the playground equipment to be reopened. I think that our community should have the option to decide for themselves what their, what their risk tolerance is and what they're willing to do, but in the meantime, doing a better job of, of marketing what options are out there, I think would help a lot. And in part of that effort, I've reached out to Head Start, and Monica Sayad, one of our community members, is working on putting together some kind of a flyer that we can distribute around town that will really be cognizant of the shortcomings, the lack of funds that some families have, so that it's not just a list of things you have to go out and buy, but things that you can do inexpensively in our community to help those kids get outdoors and have some activity. So I feel like that's something we could all be working on to help put that message out, as well as continuing to rattle the cages and work on getting the playgrounds open.
And to that end, if you, if those, if you know any names of folks who are putting together lists like that, that you could forward to me, and maybe I can get them on our Facebook page and get that put out there on our website, I would love to do that.
Madge?
Yeah, I just want to weigh in a little bit with my initial thoughts, and that is, the "we're practical" wording, if that is applicable to what we are allowed to do, in other words, you have, you know, the minimum requirement, you can't go below that standard safely, because you risk the public getting exposed, and, you know, then we risk losing our insurance coverage and all that. But the distinction between cleaning the equipment with disinfectant versus washing it seems a little arbitrary, and I don't understand, you know, like grocery stores disinfect everything, they don't wash everything, they don't come in there, I know, so I just don't understand exactly why that's such a sticking point. So I basically am agreeing with my fellow council people that we should be pursuing this and trying to, within the resources that we can apply to being able to open those playground equipment, you know, what's the, what is, how far can we stretch ourselves to do that kind of disinfecting, but stop short of something that's just clearly way beyond, beyond our resources to handle? beyond our resources to handle? And I think I agree that it would be nice if city manager or public works folks were kind of seeing where that line can be drawn. How, you know, what can we do to, within our resources, be able to open those playground equipment as soon as possible? Because clearly, it's important to our younger folks. I have one other question about now being in the red zone, and I can read it, yeah, just really quickly. What's happening with other kinds of outdoor gatherings? And what about churches? What are the current, in the red zone, what is our limits on those?
I could not tell you for sure at this time, there's a long list of things that can and cannot be done. However, the really good answers are found actually on the state website, not on the county website. And you can look at the county tiers, and you can type in your county and what you want to do, and then they will tell you what the restrictions are. It's a pretty good list of things, and I know churches are on there, what places of worship are. I know for gatherings, they were starting to do, excuse me, three, there were three families. There's also a news release that the county came out with that is on the county's website, it's also on our website, I don't know. It talks about places of worship, it says, "Now they open indoors at 25% capacity for 100 people," which is whatever is less. And so, I did want to get back before I forgot, we do have Kenan on the line from Public Works, and he is there to, he's really poring over all of the playground regulations and trying to figure out what we can really do as a city, given our staffing. And if Kenan's on the line, I'd love it if he could sort of speak to that. And according to washing and disinfecting, that is, you know, that surprised me as well, that is actually a thing. That is, it's a very big distinction, and in the rec manuals, they say, "Don't disinfect equipment, it needs to be washed." And there is really a distinction there, and they don't want people with the wipes, they don't want that on playground equipment, which really surprised me. But if you dive into the research on that, they will tell you that, they want soap, because the soap breaks down the virus. And Kenan, I know, has been reading about this as well, and he's been trying to figure out a solution, and has been asking jurisdictions. So, Kenan, if you're on the line and you want to speak to this, then... Kenan?
Certainly, certainly. Good evening, many council members, thank you for your time this evening. So, I have been looking into this because there's nothing we want more than to get things open and give people things to do. It's really tough to maintain them on the level that we do and not let anybody use them. So, I've been looking into other counties that have made it into the red zone, I'm just going to call it that. And I've reached out to some other jurisdictions that have been able to open their stuff, and from what I'm getting back, the majority consensus is that it comes down to the county restrictions and the county level wherever they're located. So, until we can satisfy our county requirements, we're going to have a tough case trying to open things up against their requirements. As far as the cleaning goes, we don't have a whole lot of staff, everybody knows that, so that would be a challenge. Water's an issue, we don't want to just waste all our water every day trying to hose everything down, we're going to need it for drinking and showering here pretty soon if we don't get some rain. So, we're just trying to be environmentally conscious, we're trying to be conscious of the fact that children will use the playgrounds, and some might be hypoallergenic, we don't want to use any products that could upset anybody or be found to be harmful later, you know, in two years, when studies come in and they find out that some of these products everyone's running out and grabbing aren't really that good for our youth. So, we're trying to be a little bit conscious of that as well before we just jump off into anything too new or untested. So, I know Stephanie's been working really hard, she's on meetings regularly with all the city managers in the county to determine a feasible strategy for what we can all do collectively to get these parks open, because every city's facing this challenge, and we know the youth is pent up, and there's frustrations and aggressions, and it's only getting worse, so we want things open as soon as we can. I've been getting some signs together in accordance with what I'm seeing, other counties and cities that have gotten out of the red zone and into a more lenient tier where the restrictions aren't so tough. I'm trying to kind of follow suit and be one step ahead, because even ordering signs takes a while now, because everyone's doing it. So, we're trying to get our signage together so that we can, if, the minute we can open them up under, say, limited occupancy, or, you know, with certain guidelines that we're able to do so. So, I just hope that you guys have faith that our staff and our workforce is devoting as much attention to this matter as we can, and really working hard on our end to get these parks open for everybody.
I, for one, Kenyon, want to just thank you, because it sounds like you're really doing your homework on this, and I know there's knee-jerk reaction, we want it open, but at the same time, we want to do it safely, and I want to make sure we don't get sued or poison some kid because we put whatever it is that maybe isn't there. It sounds like you put a lot of thought into it, and it sounds like this is moving constantly. I am curious what happens if we get into the next, out of red into orange, I think it is, and how much more leeway we'll have, and what we can do. I'm almost afraid, too, that once we get into the cold and flu season, that maybe some counties have slid back, and so, that's the other concern I have, is that we be prepared, you know, if we do become more lenient, that we, whenever you look, if it goes the other way, we basically have to cut some of these things back. Greta, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you also, I appreciate the comments from both Stephanie and Kenan, and it sounds like staff and at least, you know, most of the council sounds like we're on the same page as far as wanting to make sure that we can open things up safely. So, I do hope, it seems like you've heard at least from three council members who are saying, "We continue to push the county, we'd like to have this open safely sooner if possible." Yeah, so, just thank you for your efforts, and I hope we can keep going, and, you know, safety is so important, but giving people that option to understand what, you know, their risk level is. And I also just wanted to add that I heard a really astute comment last week from Katrina Kessin at the, what is it called, Ukiah, it's not, it's basically the Ukiah Chamber. And she said, you know, "For seven months, we've been dealing with this, and for most of this time, we've been operating in emergency mode. But this isn't an emergency anymore, this is our daily life, and so, we have to switch out of emergency mode and figure out how to move forward while we do it safely." And so, I appreciate the concerns, I appreciate the hesitancy, but at some point, we've got to figure out how to get some things back in place. So, thank you.
And then, Greta, I just want to recognize the fact that you're another voice when you, that public health officer hears, you know, it's one thing to hear from government folks, but you hear from a business person, from a council member, I think that's important, too, that the information you're getting on the street is getting to them, because they can be a little insulated. I mean, when you talk to medical folks, they'll give you one opinion, and so, I think we've kind of beat this, and I think staff kind of knows how we feel.
And honestly, I think education is a big part of it as well, is getting the word out there that if you're going to deal with high-touch surfaces, you're going to be at some level of risk, and people have to understand what that means, and just because we open it doesn't mean we're guaranteeing it's safety. I know people, you know, Larry mentioned, Councilmember Stransky mentioned that he sees people not socially distancing at the skate park, and that's the reason why some people don't go. I mean, there are parents who won't take their kids to skate park, and that's their choice, but at least there's a choice out there. So, the people who want to stay safe, we do it the safe way, and so, maybe, and this hopefully can be the same way. So, I've definitely gotten good direction, and I'll be talking to the county health officer, thank you.
Stephanie, did you have anything else, other subject or anything? If not, I'll move on. Muted.
And then, we have other staff members on the line who have reports. And now, there are...
At this point, we'll move on, and I'll see if, Dusty on there?
I'm here, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, your turn.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members, Dusty Dooley, York City Development Director. Staff is presenting council with an opportunity to seek funds for local park rehabilitation, creation, and improvement through a non-competitive grant available to local governments on a per capita basis. The Willis per capita fine in the grant series is $177,952. Just a few important details to share with council, to assist you in providing some direction to staff tonight. There is no matching fund requirement for the city, that is a standard requirement for the grant, however, due to the fact that Willis is considered as a severely disadvantaged community, we are not required to provide any matching funds and are therefore eligible for the full $177,952. Important to note that maintenance and repairs are not eligible expenses under the grant. Also, grant funds can supplement, but they cannot supplant existing expenditures approved by the city council. So, for instance, in looking over the 2020-21 preliminary budget, there appears to be $14,000 that was set aside for recreational-related capital expenditures. So, just to be budgetably clear, any funds we receive through this grant would need to supplement the existing $14,000. There is a 20% retention on the grant, and staff takes it to mean that the grantor, which is the California State Parks, will pay 80% of each invoice up until the point we actually complete the project, whereby the grantor would provide full reimbursement of eligible project costs. I did the calculation, it's 20% of the full grant is $35,590.40. The city must also agree to sign a deed restriction on the property in question to show that the city will not sell the property within the next 30 years. Let's see, you might be wondering, I know staff is, but we have not been able to confirm whether this will become an annual non-competitive grant series, or if this is a one-time opportunity available to us. And then, finally, we must submit an application by the end of the year, December 31st. So, staff is simply seeking direction from council as to whether or not you would like staff to seek funding, and if you would, you know, what eligible improvement should we put forward in our grant application. Staff has provided Attachment A, which does include a list of ideas of potential improvements to our sports complex off East Commercial Street, so that includes the soccer field, the skate park, the dog park, and the ball fields. Those improvements are expected to meet the criteria for the capital program, with the exception of painting the bathrooms, we have that on the list, and upon further review, we expect that to be a maintenance activity and therefore an ineligible expense. I just want to take, it gives us an excuse to mention that this list was developed in consultation with the late great Mr. Bill Wilson, as well as the present, not-too-shabby Kenan O'Shea, who's on the line, and actually, Kenan is as solid as they come, and we're lucky to have him, so it's an undersell to say not-too-shabby, but I did want to mention that some of these ideas were developed in a conversation that Jim and I had with Bill. Council can certainly deviate from this list, or even this site, the sports complex. This was just meant to share some ideas that we've developed over the years, but any projects we do end up identifying will certainly be vetted with the grantor prior to submitting our application to ensure their eligibility for funding. The next steps, as we see it, is to determine what project we want to seek funding so that we can complete the application, and we also need to bring a resolution to council. Right now, we have the November 10th meeting or the December 9th meeting to bring that back to you to authorize staff to submit the grant request and receive funding. Our Public Works superintendent, Kenan O'Shea, you know, is on the line. We also have our community development specialist, Jim Robbin, Jim Robbin's available, I call him the best grant writer on this side of the Eel River, he's also available to speak with council. Kenan and Jim, they may wish to add to my initial comments to council mayor, but they certainly are available along with myself to help answer any questions that the council may have. So, thank you, Mayor.
At this point, I'll see if Jim or Kenyon, either one, want to add anything, otherwise I'll open up the council.
I just wanted to say, this is Kenan, Mayor, Council, once again. Dusty, thanks for your kind words and your time. This is a good grant, we really want to pursue this, and it's an opportunity to make some good things happen. We are targeting or suggesting the sports complex as a potential site for improvement because we get a lot for our buck. It allows us to do multiple things to multiple areas that the majority of the population can enjoy and use. So, rather than focusing solely on, say, Snyder Park or the Rec Grove, which all also need improvements, don't get me wrong, we just figured that if we do something here in the areas that people can use more immediately, that that would kind of, that would show the public our resolve and our commitment to continue to provide them with athletic activities and outlets that are usually not as restricted as some of the other ones. So, you know, we're hoping that this COVID is a bump in the road, and we can all look back here soon and just kind of be past it, but in the meantime, we still want to offer something that's a little more readily available, and this way, we can give everybody a little bit of what's on the table. So, that's kind of why we went after the sports complex as a proposal, but we're certainly willing to entertain any ideas that the council deems more important or applicable, so, thank you.
Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add, otherwise I'll open up the council?
I don't really have anything to add, no.
Greta? I'm just going to go down though.
Yeah, I'm very pleased that you did drop before us, I think it's great, no matching funds. I had an opportunity to talk to both Dusty and Kenan today, and I appreciate their time. I asked about timing of the project and a few other things, and made a suggestion, I had some questions about the bathroom work done where the carnival area is, and about the amount of usage that we would get there and bang for our buck, making sure that the public gets the most value for their dollars, and made a suggestion that I felt was received well and have been on the minds of Public Works and that was that we put, that we entertain the possibility of either giving direction to put a playground over at the Gordon Logan Complex between the soccer and the baseball field rather than the bathrooms, or we leave it as a backup option at the discretion of the individuals with the city who are putting together the planning grant, should the bathroom project not be viable for this grant, that they have the discretion to then move into building in the playground option, knowing that the grant is due by December 31st, and if there's any time constraints in trying to get that back before council, that they have a leeway to do so. Thank you, Kenan, for bringing me the catalog, because I was really looking for the price range of, you know, what can we put over there if we were to switch things out, and it looks like it's definitely within our budget from what I can see if we were to swap those projects out, if it's the direction of the council, or at least as a backup plan.
Greta?
I just, I do agree that the direction that the staff is proposing for targeting these funds is appropriate and is the best bang for our buck, and I think it's kind of creative to kind of have all of that considered one project essentially, whereas if we can't, you know, we can't do that and set the swimming pool or something else simultaneously, this is the right place to put that funding, and look forward to being able to move ahead. Thanks.
Thank you. Greta?
Yeah, I, this is exciting, I'm happy to see this come before us. I did get a chance to talk to Dusty today, I did not get a chance to talk to Kenan. I think everybody can guess that, you know, I'm... I think everybody can guess that, you know, I'm pretty excited about dog park improvements because of my involvement with the creation of the dog park, but I was a little taken aback by some of the prices. I was talking to Dusty, and, you know, the dog park was essentially built by the community, and all funds were raised by the community. We did the whole thing, including building the fences, installing irrigation, planting trees, all of that, for under $15,000. So, when I look at this list and I see, you know, a trash can recycle can for $2,000 or a dog waste dispenser and bag dispenser for, I think that was also two grand, I think, well, we can do that much cheaper, and the dog park still has money in our account, and we would like to help with some of these things. So, I feel like if there's more opportunity to enhance the bathrooms, if there's more opportunity to enhance the soccer fields or the skate park, I'd rather see money go towards that than the dog park, when I think if you allow the community to help, we can do dog park upgrades for much cheaper. And we can do it at a commercial grade so that it would be stuff that the city staff, I think, could sign off of and approve of. I didn't get a chance to talk with Kenan about that, so I feel like that would be a different discussion. But anyway, I just wanted to put that two cents, and I appreciate the dog park being considered in this. I think it's a great starting point, but if we can do things cheaper and have more money go to some of those other facilities that serve more people, I'd be okay with
Thank you. Larry?
Yes, I have two questions. First of all, it says that there's a deed restriction on the property, that we will not sell it for 30 years. Is that true?
That is correct.
And also, my next question is, it says that our matching grant is $44,488. Is that correct?
That is not correct. There is no matching component to this grant.
It said that right here in my agenda, it says that the total project is 222,440 for the whole project, and the matching grant at 20% is 44,488, and the grant amount is And so, if that's not correct, I'm as surprised that it's in print.
I'm looking at the agenda summary, and I'm not finding that.
It's on page, it's on page two, right behind all the things that you guys are going to buy. Or in my packet, anyhow.
Yeah, I know. Is that on Attachment B?
Yes, page two, number two, on Attachment B.
Yeah, so this is, hi, this is Jim. I was noticing that myself right before the meeting, and it made me concerned and anxious, and so I went back and looked at the grant guidelines, and unfortunately, you don't have a copy of the grant guidelines. They're about 60 pages long, but page five of the grant guidelines clearly states that severely disadvantaged communities can be exempt from the matching, even though this, here it says there are no exemptions to matching, and we think, we've been through a process, I believe, to be certified as a severely disadvantaged community for which we have paperwork. So, after this meeting, we'll immediately go and double-check that and confirm that. But my understanding is that we are, in fact, exempt from the matching, and there is no matching requirement for the city, Willis.
I see that, it says it, but, okay. And nobody's concerned about not selling the property for 30 years? I'm not going to be around in that time, so the rest of you are going to have to fill that one out. And also, I'm concerned if Prop K, the sales tax doesn't go through, and if we don't have a match, then that's one thing, but if we do have a match of 44, I would wait until after the course.
Thank you very much.
I think that the answer to this is, we're going to research that, and this is going to come to you for a vote at the next meeting, and this is just sort of an opportunity for folks to weigh in and see if we've forgotten everything. So, that gives us time to actually check this. And so, by the time we come back to actually pass the resolution to do this grant, we will have answered that question.
Okay. Well, I'll just add, I had the same concerns there, but it sounds like you guys are checking on them, and it sounds like I want to give you guys the leeway you need to do that. So, do we need a motion or anything? If you actually wanted to speak up?
I was just going to ask if you need a motion, but apparently we don't. It would give in direction, and, okay, that's it.
All right, well, thank you, and I think I'm excited, too. This is kind of neat. I do want to throw my plug into the skate park because our donor that donated the skate structure, I know that if you could do something, show our commitment there, and it sounds like you had that in mind, so. All right, thank you very much, Dusty and Jim.
Mayor, this is Dusty. Can I get clarification on one item from Councilmember Connie?
Go ahead, Greta.
Councilmember Connie, when you were referring to the improvements in the dog park, were you talking about all the improvements or just certain ones that have been identified?
Um, let me, hold on, let me pull it back up again.
Included benches, picnic table, trash can recycle can, dog play structure, pet waste bag dispenser, yeah.
I think that the dog park committee has funds that could cover several of those items. I think a dog play structure is something that we've sort of felt was out of reach, so it'd be nice to consider that in this grant opportunity, but I do think that we could probably come up with waste bag dispenser and receptacle, trash can recycle can, even benches, and a picnic table for considerably less than is being suggested here. And I do believe that dog lovers are happy to help with improvements, and so if we ask the community for help, I think we could probably do that in a more economic way, and that would free up money for those other parts of the park.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification. We will keep the dog play structure on the list that comes back to council. Thank you.
All right. Dusty, did you have anything else?
Oh, are we under department reports here?
Yep, so we're kind of done with your, the one thing, but if you have anything else?
Yeah, just a few things here. So, we heard from FEMA to let us know that the updated draft maps are going to be available in mid-November. Of course, we've been hearing that for 18 months now. The council may recall that the city successfully challenged the previous draft FEMA maps that were applicable to the city, as they did not appear accurate. FEMA agreed, and they found the underlying information that formed the maps to be less than accurate, so our petition was successful, and we're expected to receive updated FEMA maps in mid-November that are more friendly to the city, meaning less area map within the city within the 100-year flood zone, and all the insurance requirements that go along with folks that are, happen to be within those 100-year flood zones as mapped by FEMA. The council should have gotten a recent update emailed to them, and this was regarding the Caltrans Blosser Lane and State Route 20 intersection improvements. The initial and near project proposes to install several improvements at that intersection, including crosswalk enhancements, the painted bulbout, lighting upgrades, and then the rapid flashing beacon, enhanced safety crosswalks, similar to what you see at McDonald's across the highway Main Street there. Of course, the purpose of the improvements is to slow down traffic on Highway 20 and improve pedestrian safety when crossing Highway 20 at Blosser Lane and Coast Street. The project has been designed, funded, and construction is expected to begin mid-November Further, also in that same email, Caltrans included preliminary designs of a roundabout at Highway 20 Blosser Lane intersection, which was, has been recommended in previous planning documents, including the Mendocino Council of Government's 2017 Regional Transportation Plan. That, of course, is the expensive option, certainly relative to the one I just outlined, and that is currently unfunded. But, you know, staff very much appreciates the design work as it will more than likely be a necessary component of any future grant application that the city may choose to seek in the future to fund the construction of such a roundabout. So, certainly kudos from staff for Caltrans taking the time to design a possible roundabout for the city's potential consideration. The last item I just wanted to provide an update to council on is the California Conservation Corps Campus Project. Again, this is a project that consists of a new CCC residential center that includes a total of approximately 64,000 square feet of new building construction. The purpose is in part to house 120 permanent Corps members within our community. The center will still include 12 buildings, including your administrative building, seven dormitories, education building, recreational building. One of them was a multipurpose building with a kitchen and dining room, warehouses, et cetera. I spoke with the deputy of the Capitol Outlay Program that was for the CCC, that was assigned by the governor of the state. The design is complete. They're finalizing permits with a number of state agencies, including Department of Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps, State Water Board, working through their permitting requirements. They're expected to break ground in spring of 2021 and complete the project by summer 2023. So, exciting little update, I think, on that project, and yeah, that's what I wanted to share. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dusty. Go ahead, Greta, you're unmuted.
I have a question, Dusty. Is there any possibility you can give us an update on the lighted crosswalk that had been proposed between Northspur Brewery and 101 Burgers?
I don't, I will need to get back to you on that one. I don't have that information offhand.
Sorry, didn't mean to spring that on you, just something that came to mind when you were talking about the Highway 20 intersection.
No, I'm curious now as well. Thank you for asking.
And thank you for reminding us. I know that we were sort of ready to go on that, but that is actually a Public Works project, not a community development project, so let me check with Kenan and those guys and see where, see when we can get that done. That's awesome. Thank you.
All right. Is Kenan still hanging around? Did he have anything else?
Yes, sir, I can report. Mayor, council members, to the lighted crosswalk, we have it at Public Works. It is safe and secure, and we're waiting to be able to get it online to install. We're probably going to have to reach out to some subcontractor to help us with the installation because of the electrical work that's going to need to happen. As far as Public Works goes, we've been, you know, kind of on the verge of PSPs like everybody else, you know, fielding up generators and getting ready to stand by, but we actually have a meeting tomorrow with the Caltrans engineers. They're going to come out, and we're going to run a test, and we're going to fire up our generators, and we're going to run our boxes, and we're going to make sure that everything is working correctly. And I feel better having their blessing and having them involved in it because I don't want to plug anything into their million-dollar traffic loop and cause me problems. So, we're going to meet them tomorrow at 10:00 and do kind of a fire drill, so to speak, and make sure that we can power the traffic loops if we're out of power. So, we've been preparing for that. We've also been doing a lot of cleanup this time of year where we try to get all the garbage before it makes its way into the creeks. So, we've been targeting at least one or not two areas every week, and we've been blowing up our sleeves and going under the bridges and picking up the garbage, and we did a big cleanup on the bottom of Sherwood. We're responsible for a little under a half mile there where it starts to flatten out at the top, all the way down to the bottom now. So, we did a big cleanup on the roadside up there. There was a lot of garbage, and that all works its way into the streams and storm drains, so we've just been trying to get ahead of that. And I've had the guys out in some of our ditches and irrigation ditches that take the water away during flood times, and we've been trying to clean them out and kind of get them ready. You know, we usually use con crews and stuff for some of this work, but they've all been out on the fires, and they're under real short supply, so we've been taking our equipment while we can and trying to get ahead of the floodwaters and just get ready for rain. So, there's not a lot else to report out on. Our sweeper did take a hit last week. Our operator and the motorist, everybody's okay, no one got hurt, but he was pulled over on the side of the road with all his lights on and totally out of the way, but somebody rear-ended him, wasn't paying attention, and the other vehicle was destroyed, but the sweeper, she took the hit, mostly cosmetic. We ran it for a few hours afterwards, and it seems like it's going to be okay, but the motorist was uninsured, so it's going to be hard to squeeze money out of that and get compensated, but we're looking at doing some repairs just to make sure that it stays in good condition because it's one of our newer pieces of equipment. So, it was an unfortunate situation, but we're just glad no one got hurt. And other than that, we're just getting ready for the rain and hoping it comes soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kenan, and I really appreciate you guys and all the work you're doing, especially the PSP stuff there. It's a pain, but it's something we're starting to live with, I guess. Kathy, do you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to give a little bit of info on the elections. As most
Kathy, you're muted.
I got it. So sorry, I forget about that. I just want to give a little bit of update on the elections. Things are going really well. As most of you know, we have a ballot, we're hosting a ballot box this year, which has been very successful for our voters. It's something that we've never done before. Actually, nobody in the county has ever done it before, so it's been quite interesting. The box is checked seven days a week, twice a day. Myself and Dolores Peterson come down on the weekends. We check it, we count the ballots, they go into a box that's in a secured room, and the county comes and picks them up every day. So, it's been working out quite nicely. I feel sorry for the election official that has to make that round to the entire county every other day, but she's getting quite used to it. As of 5:00 this evening, we have received 1,719 ballots, so we're doing quite well ahead of time. They're very pleased with how that's going. In the county, they have received quite a few ballots ahead of the game. So, polls will be open on November 3rd from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and they are taking all kinds of precautions in the community center. They're telling us that they will be setting up, and only certain amount of people will be allowed in at a time, so there might be a little bit of backup at the door, hopefully not, and they'll have plexiglass and things like that up to protect the ladies that are going to be here. So, we're very appreciative that this has all fallen into place really well this year. I'd also like to thank the U.S. Forest Service for doing all the repairs and the painting up at the airport. It has turned out absolutely wonderful. We could not have done it without them. We sprung for the paint, and they did everything else. So, a big thank you to all of them. Most of them are gone. I think Kenan told me yesterday, and we only have one helicopter up there, so they're on their way out, but we can't say thank you enough. So, thank you, Mayor.
Kathy, I'd like to talk, is there any way you guys can wrap the letter for our signature thanking them?
Yes.
You can all sign it.
Question for you, Kathy. I've had a couple of people from the community ask, they've dropped off their ballots at the City Hall Dropbox, and they have signed up for that, I guess it's like an app from the county where you can sort of track your ballot, and they have not apparently been received at the county yet. So, what's the, do we have any idea of what the lag time might be when somebody drops off their ballot at City Hall and when it might be registered as received by the county?
I do not know, unfortunately. I will check into that, and we'll make a note of it. They did say that they are behind because they've gotten so many in, so I will check into that. I'm sorry, I don't have an answer.
Awesome, thank you. They are picking them up once a day, though, at this point, right?
Depending on how many we have. They are calling to see if we only have, you know, less than 100, they're going to wait a day. So, it just really depends on how many we have, but she has been here almost every day this, well, she has been here every day this week. So, that is the game plan, though, for them to start picking up every day.
Greta, go ahead. Just wondering, do you know whether they are, I know they go and verify the signatures so that ballots are ready to count. Do they start counting before Election Day, those ones that have been delivered? Yes?
They did say yesterday they are starting to count.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, just down and around? All right, is Kenan around? Nope. See Dolores there, but does Dolores have anything? Otherwise, anybody else?
No, I'm good, thank you, Jerry.
Okay. Am I missing somebody? Okay, I guess not, I think at this point. Now at City Council Reports, and, no, we are City Council Committee Boards and Agency Reports. Suprema, do you have anything?
Yeah, last week, Mendocino Transit Authority hosted many transit agencies in Northern California at our site looking at an electric bus. We were pretty excited. We thought we were going to take the plunge and purchase this electric bus, but the more we looked into it, we found that it may not be the best use of taxpayers' funds to kind of get in early on purchasing the bus because we saw that there were many unknowns. Initially, we thought that the first electric bus might go in Willets and replace bus number one, which is our local route, but we're finding that it's just not a good fit yet. We are not getting enough mileage. We can't track the data. There's quite a few issues still, but we have the funds earmarked, and we're just looking to hope that they improve our offerings quicker. So I'll keep you posted on that. Nothing else to report.
Match, do you have anything?
Yes, Emswa, the Mendocino Recycle, met the day after our previous regular meeting, so a couple weeks ago, and struggling a little bit with a tremendous extra load of household hazardous waste, I guess because people are sheltering at home more and they're cleaning things out. So especially on the coast, they've been getting just huge loads, and they're struggling with how to manage that so that they don't turn people away because they only have so much room in the trucks that they take, especially out to the coast. But they are managing that, and that's good. And then also, our general manager, Jennifer Lombardi, is kind of looking into what things are maybe falling in the cracks of what Emswa used to do when they had more funding from the county, and then the county took back their portion of the funds, and which things are still expected to be done by Emswa. And we're going to be looking into that. So that's Emswa. And then on EDFC, we will be meeting after, well, kind of in mid-November, so we don't have a recent meeting, but there is a quarterly report that just came out, and I could send it, maybe forward it to the council members, but there were quite a few highlights in there. One of them is the mask-up Mendo and providing masks and sanitizer to our business community, and Chamber's been handling that, but that's been provided through EDFC, which is great. Another one is that we have given about $1.1 million worth of business loans in the last year, and we have about $1.8 million still available, and those grants are for businesses anywhere from $5,000 to $250,000 per business to help them expand or start a new business. And so people that are interested in availing themselves of that kind of financing, we have a really good staff member who has been working with individual businesses and really helping them figure out how to maximize their use of those funds and be able to pay them back and be able to thrive in this new normal that we're dealing with, with COVID. They've also done kind of an annual report, which includes looking at which sectors of the economy are getting those loans and do that region by region. And the loans have been somewhat heavily in the food businesses, but they're trying to make sure that they keep a nice mix of different kinds of economic activity to promote in the county. Also, the county authorized a kind of an audit of EDFC's work, and the audit came up with, for each dollar that EDFC loans out, it creates $1.72 in returns to the community. And I think that the loans have created some, I think it was 194 jobs, new jobs. So anyway, it was an interesting report to see the return on our investment with EDFC's loan funds. They are also working much more closely now with West Company and also with the Chambers in a kind of a broader base coalition of groups on the building resilience in the county, the Move 2030 Plan. So it's been really nice to see the networking going on. I think that's all I have to report on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Match, and I hate to say that it took COVID to get everybody working together, but it sounds like we're starting to work together.
We were trying to do it before that, too.
I know.
So the museum advisory board met yesterday. We didn't have a quorum, so we're going to reschedule that meeting for November 10th. We nevertheless had some good discussion. The best news to come out of that advisory board recently is that we have now successfully formed a new Friends of the Mendocino County Museum organization, and that will act as a fundraising body to help make our museum even better. So that's good news, and I'll have more information after our actual quorumed meeting November 10th. I also wanted to give a quick update about the Economic Recovery COVID Meeting I attend on Thursdays. Two of the biggest areas of discussion last week were the plan to try to bring some mobile testing to the more remote corners of the county. The Chambers are working to sort of build off of a program that hospitality and hotels are doing over on the coast, where we'll have essentially a mobile unit that will set up space to offer COVID testing to employers, employees, and community members. So for some of our areas like Leightonville, Covelo, even Willets, where we don't have easy access to testing, the hope is that this can help us find more negative cases to help decrease our positivity rate here in the county, and that can help keep our business community in the, our entire community in the red and move us maybe even into orange. So trying to normalize testing, make it more available to people in the community, and show more negatives. The other thing that we talked about is the opening of a new grant opportunity for small businesses in the county. It is through the Federal Cares Act. The portal for opening, accessibility for these funds will be on November 2nd, so any interested businesses should go to the West Company site, or they're called West Development Center now. And it's available, it's really targeted towards our small microbusinesses, people who have fewer than five employees, but the grants are up to $10,000 and to help with expenses incurred during COVID. So if you're a restaurant and you've had to increase your outdoor space, if you're a barber and you've had to have your chair outside, any of that kind of cost potentially is something that you can help fund with these grants. So interested businesses should check that out. And just hoping that our business community can hang on through the winter, and for those who are really struggling, help is out there, so please ask for it. Lot of good minds working on this around the county to try and find assistance. That's my report.
Thank you, Greta, and thank you for the West Company thing. I think they're linked off our website, aren't they? Stephanie? The West Company? West Business Development Center there?
We post many things that they post. We put it on our website. I usually share things of theirs on our Facebook page, so we try to do as much as possible.
All right, thank you.
I did want to say, there is a little bit of a confusion on that most recent grant opportunity. In the information on their website, it says that it's only eligible for businesses that are sole proprietorships. In the discussion last Thursday, there was a suggestion that that might not be the case. Some of our microbusinesses aren't sole props. They might be LLCs because they own property and they're trying to limit their liability. So we need a little more clarity on that. We didn't get a like firm answer last week if it really was truly only for sole props. So if you think you're not eligible for this, please do a little bit of digging. You may be. So just wanted to put that out.
And I know they're always open at the West Company to answer questions, too, so yeah, call them up, they'll steer you in the right direction. Larry, do you have anything?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
I just want to point out, I did attend the virtual Measure B meeting today, and just the highlights were that a discussion regarding their expenditure report, the administrative project managers update. They did a first draft of their strategic plan. It was kind of lacking, but I think that was, they explained it was a first draft, and they were looking for input from Measure B Board. There was supposed to be something on the status of the Kemper Services, but that was their chair, and she was not in attendance. I'm not sure what the issue was because I couldn't get on to it. And then there was an issue regarding their contracts with the county. I guess there's some, I guess it's going to come back to them regarding how they get services now that they're branching out, whether it be their training center or other things they're doing, they're having to go with the county, and I think there was some confusion as to who's going to pay for what and hiring. So that's all I've got on that.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, was there any discussion about the fact that a lot of people got dropped off the Measure B mailing list? Many of us were not notified that we were having a Measure B meeting, so I was wondering if they mentioned that.
No, there was actually a big Zoom issue on that meeting. I think they sent out the wrong link where they tried to do a different link, and a lot of the folks on there, normally what it does is it sends me into a room where I can't, I guess no one can see my video, and it goes straight to audio. It went into another deal, so. Now, I saw your email in response, and I got an email from a different source, and that's how I got the information, but I normally can click on that email, but this was a PDF that wasn't linked meetings, so that's why I had a hard time getting this. I don't know what the issue was. That was it.
I was just going to say, I think I used to be on the Measure B email list, and I don't think I got a notice either.
Yeah, I think, Stephanie, you let Allison know that it was an issue.
I did, but she didn't get back to me, so I'll follow up with a--
Okay. All right. We are now, I guess, council member reports and recommendations. All right, Good and Welfare.
I have a quick comment. FEMA's been down at the library this last week, and today I just popped in to ask a quick question, and I said, hey, as a business owner, I was closed for three and a half days back in the first week of September during the fire. Is that something that's covered under FEMA? And I was told yes, so I filled out an application right then and there, and the process was pretty quick and easy, and I just have two documents to submit via fax. So any businesses that have been impacted, even though you weren't evacuated, we did have very poor air quality, and so if you had to close your business and you experienced an economic impact, you can apply. You didn't have to lose property or your home or your belongings. If you suffered a loss financially to your business, you can apply, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. And Stephanie, were they at City Hall also during the PSP? I saw their trailer here at City Hall.
They were, and honestly, they weren't interacting with city staff. I think that they were just interacting with the PSPS Center that was set up during the entirety of the PSPS that didn't actually happen here.
Okay. You know, on that note, I just wanted to thank you for pushing out all the information. I get it from multiple sources, but I think between what PG&E put out, actually, I thought for sure we were going to get cut off. This was probably the most noticed I've seen in a long time. And even with that, I checked on a lot of my neighbors, and I think it was about three quarters knew about it, that some folks, I guess, don't check their, aren't on email, don't listen to the radio, and maybe they didn't get their call from PG&E or something, so. But there were some folks that didn't get the word out, and I kind of told them it's on the city website, PG&E, et cetera, it's on the news, et cetera, but so, can only do so much, but information is power, and so I appreciate that, so.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. I was just, I was going to give some kudos to PG&E. We've developed a really good relationship with our, with our area liaison, and she's in constant contact with me if there's even a hint of a breath of wind, and she texts me all the time. So I tend to be able to skip just about everybody because she is in contact, and she hasn't let me down yet, so I really give, she's really trying hard, because last year was so hard for the cities because we weren't getting information. So she makes it a point that cities get indications first, so I really appreciate that.
Yeah, that's good. All right. No Good and Welfare? Do you have one closed session matter, recruitment and potential--
Jerry?
Yes.
Are we on Good and Welfare?
Yeah, I did. I just didn't get anybody, so if you have something, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had one, I didn't know. Okay, anyway, I have one. And that is that Supervisor John Hascheck is going to have a Town Hall Zoom meeting on November 15th, a Sunday, at 3:00 p.m., and Will and the Willetts Environmental Center, Restaurant Alianza, the Chamber of Commerce, and probably some other, oh, the AAUW, University Women. A lot of basically public interest groups are basically endorsing it, but it's really just going to be John Hascheck talking about what's going on at the county and taking questions and comments from his constituency. So anybody who wants to join that, it'll be November 15th at 3:00 p.m. I'll be putting out some public information about it with how to join the Zoom call, or people can call in by phone. But he really feels the need to hear from his constituents. It's really hard to do that at the Board of Supervisor meetings. It's extremely awkward, so I'm really glad that he's taking this opportunity to open up a dialogue with the public. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right. Okay, we, again, we have one closed session notice, Shorter Government Code 54957, Recruitment and Potential Public Employee Appointment, City Manager. If I have anything to report out, I'll come back in here with Kathy. Otherwise, thank you very much, everybody, and Kathy, can we do a five-minute break before we go in there?
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.